This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 9th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor David Kegel, Cottage Hill Baptist Church, Downtown Campus, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for having me. Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be your name. May your kingdom come and your will be done here in the city of Mobile just as it is in heaven. And Lord, your word teaches us to lift up those who govern and lead in our communities and in our nation. And Lord, I pray for those leaders who are present here today. Lord, I ask that you might grant them wisdom, and not just simply the wisdom of man, but wisdom from above, that they might know how to best meet the needs of the communities throughout this city. And Lord, I pray that there also might be a sense of unity in this room today, that we might be able to work together for the common good of the people of this city. Lord, we thank you for this day, and we recognize that you are the giver of all good gifts. And to you belong all the glory and the honor and the praise. It's in Christ's name that I pray. Amen.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. Let me get everyone's attention, please. Last week, I announced that I was going to go into a little bit more depth in our rules for this meeting, and I'm going to do it for the rest of this month. The last couple of weeks, we had some interruptions in our meetings, so therefore, I'm going to define decorum. And again, I will be doing that for the rest of this month, just to make sure that everyone has respect. And therefore, if I have to stop this meeting, I will stop this meeting, especially when someone is speaking. And I will stop until each individual person or the individual person has stopped talking or stopped interrupting the meeting. Again, I hate to do that, but we will be doing that for the rest of this month, again, to define decorum. But welcome to our meeting, and at this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please put it on the off or the vibrated position at this time, the off or the vibrated position at this time. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond, to maintain decorum. And again, decorum, going through our rules, states that while in council session, the members shall preserve the order and decorum. And members shall neither by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt proceedings or the peace of the council, nor disturb any members while speaking or refuse to obey the orders of the council or presiding officers, except as otherwise here is provided. All persons in attendance at the council meeting shall refrain from making comments regarding the good name and character of any individual unless at an executive session as authorized by the Alabama law, using language that insults, or demeans in a person, or use of profanity, vocal, or electronic device. I ask if you put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Again, all person in attendance at the council meeting shall refrain from making comments regarding the good name and character of any individuals unless at an executive session as authorized by the Alabama law, using language that insults or demeaning in a person, or use of profanity, or vulgar language, or justice. Attendees at the council meeting shall not interrupt speakers, engage in behaviors that disrupt the meeting, including, but not limited to, applause, cheers, jeers, yelling, shouting, out of order, or other norms, eating, or engage in behaviors that intimate others as promote violence or disorderance. Any persons, any meeting attendees who fail to comply with the directives of the presiding officer to follow the council rules or otherwise disrupt the council meeting in any manner be held out of order in order to leave the speaker podium and may be ordered to leave the council chamber by the presiding officer. Any person so expelled shall not be re-admitted for the remainder of the meeting from which expelled it, or otherwise violate the council rules while the council is in session. And again, to maintain decorum, there will be non-do applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of August 2nd.
2nd.
They're promptly moved in 2nd in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody here this morning. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedules to join us today. Earlier this morning, Councilman Small and I were on Dolphin Island Parkway where we cut the ribbon on a brand-new precinct. It's in the first police precinct in the 3rd district. This is the culmination of our strategic plan whereby we strategically located our police precincts. This is the third one that we have built out. The first one was in Tillman's Corner five years ago. Last one was two years ago at downtown precinct, and then this one on Dolphin Island Parkway. It is our hopes that the citizens will see improved response times because of this relocation, but also there'll be a municipal court clerk office in the precinct, so those citizens that living in the DIP area, they will not have to come downtown if they have to transact business regarding possibly paying tickets or vehicle inspections. Also, another aspect of which makes this precinct very important is that it has classrooms in it where we can now have what is what we'll call our third class of police trainees that we can do on an annual basis. Up until now, we've only been able to conduct two classes of police trainees because of space limitations, but because of the new precinct, new classrooms, now we'll have three classes every year of our police recruits, so that will certainly help us fill the void in the ranks that currently exist in MPD. At this time, I'd like to call on Colonel Delamp to introduce the Public Works Employees of the Month, he and Shonda Smith.
Good morning.
It's our honor to introduce three of our employees from the Public Works Directorate to recognize them as employees of the month for the month of July, and so we've got our, we'll start with our Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Greg Bowie, and we'll have our, Ms. Shonda Smith will talk about, and we'll get our employee down here to recognize them. Come on down. Don't be afraid.
Can't avoid this mic like this. So we would like to recognize Mr. Mr. Greg Bowie with the Parks and Rec Department. We appreciate all that you do. I know I called you out to be able to speak as well, so I want to give you a time to speak.
Just let me first say, praise the Lord. I am happy, truly overjoyed, to be here and to be a recipient of this award. I find out that I was selected and voted upon, and thank God, He touched your hearts the way you voted in my direction. I'm appreciative to be an employee of the city. I always say that I love my most meaningful task that is performed here, and I am truly elated with ecstatic joy to be here. I want to thank my superiors, Mr. Delamp, Shonda, Mr. Dan Otto, and Mr. Matt Hostet. They are wholesome and gracious to me being an employee here, and I really enjoy my stay here. I'm also pleased to be in this building and to be in this assembly. I pray that God will take care of everyone here in their entirety and lead them in the right direction. Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Next, we're going to have our new Director of Public Services, Mr. Markless Salo, is going to come down and introduce the Employee of the Month from Public Services.
Good morning. So this is my, I think, eighth day as a Public Services Director, and this is the, you know, the best thing I get to do in my position, right, is recognize outstanding performance. So I got to talk to our employee this past week and found that he was doing some amazing work. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Andre Larkin, our recipient, and then his supervisor of the maintenance, vehicle maintenance section, Mr. John Evans.
Kind of nervous, you know? But I want to thank everybody that voted for me, and I appreciate this honor. I enjoy my job. My job consists of making sure everybody get around in here, you know, in the whole city. But thank you for honoring me, and hope many, many more years. Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
And finally, we'll have Ms. Sheila Biko from our Bill Mobile Department introduce our Employee of the Month from Public Services at large.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce David Porter. He was hired as an Engineering Tech III with the city back in April of 2017 and was promoted in April of '21, and he currently serves as our Chief of Central Permitting. Just a few comments from-
One second, Ms. Biko. At this time, I, again, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please put it on the off or the vibrated position.
David is just an all-around nice person with a positive attitude that comes through in his work. He possesses a sense of urgency when handling internal and external customers. He wants to learn, treat the customer equitably, while still ensuring that city codes and regulations are complied with. And just a note that we recently received, that was received by David's supervisor.
Hello, Ms. Biko. I'm going to ask the audience, please seize your talking. You interrupt the council. The feedback hits us up here, and we can barely hear Ms. Biko. Again, I'm going to ask the audience, please give the respect to the speaker, please. Thank you.
The Vice President of a large home-building company commented on David's interactions recently, and he specifically stated that his level-headedness, calm demeanor, and positive attitude were all significant to helping this particular project move through the permitting process. The builder also stated that hiring David Porter was a major positive decision that the city of Mobile should all be proud of. So thank you for recognizing David this morning.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Carroll.
Being that I'm in the business of home-building, I think I call Mr. Porter 100,000 times a week at one point in time or another, so I can truly say he's an asset to permitting, personally, in that we're in the industry. So David, great job, and we appreciate what you do out there.
Congratulations to, again, to all the employees.
Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. They're promptly moved in 2nd in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A general is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on September 2nd, September 3rd, September 4th in Herndon Sage Park, August 14th in Cooper Riverside Park, August 27th in Benville Square, November 9th, November 11th in Cathedral Square, August 27th on Spring Hill Avenue.
So moved. 2nd. They're promptly moved in 2nd in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on August 20th on Darwood Drive.
Moved to leave it over one week. 2nd. They're promptly moved in 2nd in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal is laid over for one week.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Medevac Alabama to operate an ambulance service. This public hearing is canceled by procedural ordinance. Public hearing to rezone property located at 2100 North University Boulevard from R1 to B2.
This opens up the public hearing for 2100 North University Boulevard. If anyone would like to address the council, you may come down at this time by coming up to the podium by stating your name and your address. If anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezone property located at the southeast corner of Cottage Hill Road and Solley Road from B2 and B1 to B2.
This opens up the public hearing for the said item. If anyone present that would like to speak, you may do so by coming down to the podium by stating your name and your address. Is anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at 2765 College Street, 753 Rebecca Drive, 3201 Center Road, 962 Government Street, 657 Donald Street, 164 Hemley Avenue, 502 Stanton Road, 724 Kentucky Street, 1479 Navco Road, 1632 Prairie Avenue, 7324 Street, public nuisances, and fixing the costs for said structures and ordering the demolition of them.
This opens up the public hearing for the said properties. If anyone would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Kaiser. I represent A&amp;K Properties, and the property today is Rebecca Drive, Rebecca Drive. It's on the list, 753.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That property was purchased by A&amp;K Properties for delinquent taxes approximately two years ago, and the heirs to that property has been a resident in there, and we were going through our attorneys to get him ejected, but fortunately for us, the city got involved, and you guys got the guys out. So I think the police came by a couple of times because the grass was high. It was told to me that we had no legal right to enter the property as long as the guy was there, so we had to go through the legal process. Now that he's out, we've begun some improvements in phases, cutting the grass, and then we've got estimates on boarding the property up and disposing of all the debris and making it safe, and also patching the roof.
Mr. Dackelbach? So let me ask you this question while Mr. David come down. So you in the process of making all the repairs or boarding it up, or?
Correct. I got before and after pictures of the yard. The grass was about a foot high and all that, so we got, we got the grass cut, we got some, a lot of the limbs and things out of the yard, and starting next week, they're gonna begin to, we need to put a dumpster out there and get rid of all that debris in the yard and in the house, and then we're gonna board it up, and then we have it on the schedule to totally rehab it in, I think, late '23.
Okay, so you think you will be able to complete that within 30 days?
Probably-
Not the rehab part, but as far as the cleaning it up and boarding and securing it?
I can definitely, we could definitely do it in 60, because we're having a problem getting dumpsters. There's been a waiting list for that.
Mr. Penn?
Yes, David, can you kind of get some clarity to the situation?
Yes, that's fantastic news that we have someone that wants to step up to renovate it, and I do recommend that we hold it over at least 60 days to give you an opportunity, one, to get the permit to secure it, and then move forward to clean up the property and secure the house. That way, you can go forward with your plans for final plans for renovation. So that's an excellent plan. 60 days, let's hold it over, let them secure it, and we can move forward with renovations.
Okay. Thank you, David. Get with Mr. David as soon as this is over with, the public hearings, to make sure that you follow everything that the city is asking for. Okay?
Oh, thank you. That was one of the problems you mentioned. I didn't know it, but it was a Hemley Drive. You mentioned it?
Yes.
We're only the mortgage company on that one. We have no interest at this point. The people we sold it to paid, I want to say, 95% of the mortgage, and then they just stopped paying, but far as we're concerned, we really don't have any interest in that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Jesse Burks, my wife, Keisha Burks, 1111 Elmoira Street. We're here to talk about 962 Government. We have recently purchased that this year, and we do understand this house has been a nuisance and changed hands and changed hands, but our plan is to renovate this home as our single-family residence. We have three children. We live here in Mobile, and we plan to do a full restoration on this property, and we are going to begin. Biggest part of this property is someone has built a brick facade around a home, and we're going to start in the back within the next 30 days, getting it safe to enter, to start demoing the entire house and work from the back to the front. But this is going-
Yeah, Mr. Carroll brought that to our attention during pre-conference, and I believe that the council is going to table this particular action item, and so, good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the council on any of the said items?
Thank you, Small. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. While my intent is not to make this a question-and-answer period, I sent some information over this morning regarding property at 657 Donald Street and as well 724 Kentucky Street. I basically just want to know the performance of the demolition. Was that within the city, or was that contracted? So what would the big results and how the public can receive that, on how this figure for the 3,900 came to be, and the ordinance that declares for the citizens to take on the expenses of the fixed cost? And lastly, on the 724 Kentucky Street, was the owner of the structure a resident of Mobile? And, excuse me, were any formal communications from the neighboring citizens communicated, excuse me, formal complaints from neighboring citizens communicated to the city regarding this specific property?
From my understanding, Mr. here, as you stated, you sent that email this morning. You had to give the staff enough time to answer your emails and everything.
Do you have a particular time that that would take?
No, sir, I can't answer for the administration.
Counsel matter.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to address the council on any of the said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council.
Good morning. My name is Wesley Young. I reside at 3058 James Street. I'm here this morning to speak on retirees' bonuses. It's a good day if we can give retired bonus passed through the council. Now, it's my understanding this started with RSA, and it moved down to our legislators, then it came to the mayor. Mayor Stimson, I thank you 100% for accepting retirees' bonuses to give them out. It's a good day, and when people do something to help people that needs help, because our pensions are getting lower and lower and lower, and with this economy, we have taken a big hit. Some people may say it's not enough, but something from nothing is better than nothing. So we're here today, it's the day to say thank you. There's some retirees that here today, and they're in the audience. We want to make sure that if RSA ever implement a proposal plan for bonuses, that the city of Mobile take interest in it and make sure, if feasible, to give us another bonus any time in the future, because we cannot keep living with the same money, and everything else costs rising high and high. I want to thank Chief Barbara and Councilman Small for the communication, and Councilman Penn, for the communication that we've had for the last several days, or several months, as relates to this matter. Communication is the key to resolving problems. If you don't communicate with that person, you'll never resolve problems. So we have to have communication. I said this once, I'm gonna say it again. We are Mobile. We've always found a way to help one another when we need it, when things were down and out. We need to continue that process, and we need to look out for all Mobile. We cannot move forward unless we take every Mobilean in this city and move forward along with us. Thank you, and have a great day.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Young. I know you and several retirees have been coming down here for many years, you know, asking for raises, and even within this last couple of weeks, a couple of months, just found out that the city cannot just give y'all raises. It's the state had to give us permission to give y'all raises and et cetera. But as long as I'm on this council and the state allows us to give you all raises, I'm going to vote for it, because again, been a long time since y'all had a cost of living raise, and everything keep on going up and up and up, including prescriptions. And even though, to me, just, you know, these couple hundred dollars, it's just a few pennies, you know, and everything else is going up, like you say, a little something is better than none, but the more it comes to us, the less for us, to us, that allow you all to get a raise, I'm going to vote for it, because again, you all the backbones, you all were the backbones or are the backbones of this city that made this city what it is today. Again, thank you, and thank you to all the retirees who also invest into the city of Mobile.
I just want to share this with you for a few minutes. During my tenure and these retirees that you see here time at the city, Mobile Public Works was voted the number-one public works in the nation.
Following Katie Herndon is Reverend Titus Thorne.
Good morning. My name is Katie Herndon. I reside at two two zero five Spring Hill Avenue in District One. On this day, August ninth, eighteen fourteen, Andrew Jackson signed the Treaty of Fort Jackson, ending the Creek War, surrendering twenty-three million acres of Creek land to the U.S., which now makes up about half of present-day Alabama. As you well know, this isn't the only time land has been taken. Just up the road, there's Africatown, founded by freed slaves that became a vibrant community of about twelve thousand people, only to have the residential neighborhood bulldozed by the white powers that be for commercial use, thereby polluting and destroying their community. I could go on and on. Bottom line, our history shows that people of color have been disenfranchised time and time again simply because of the color of their skin. This history is important because we remember how the past shaped the present and today's decision will shape the future. Today, this council has the opportunity to take a historic step by allowing our black community a seat at the table. You can take a step to restore the dignity and trust in our community. A city without community trust will never be successful. We must allow our black community the opportunity to vote for a candidate of their choice. U.S. leaders and we as citizens have a duty to uphold that. It has been said throughout this process that this shouldn't be about race. Redistricting, when it's conducted fairly, accurately reflects population changes and racial diversity. Redistricting has to comply with the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, an act to prevent racial discrimination. And then you have the Zogby Act here in Mobile, which establishes equal representation for minorities. Our city is now a majority-black city, so yes, it is absolutely about race. I know it is uncomfortable to some and guess what? That's okay. These are difficult conversations. These conversations are not divisive. They are about working together towards bridging the gap between the white and black community. This truly will make us a better city. Redistricting is our constitutional responsibility. Annexation may or may not be a good idea. It will take time and critical study to make sure it doesn't dilute our black voting population. I have said it before, Mobile has incredible potential and clearly by all of these meetings, we have major community involvement. We should all be proud of that. This community has spoken week after week for seven months. I hope that each one of you will vote with your community in mind because it will absolutely shape the future of Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Titus Thorne, followed by Reverend Jim Flowers.
My name is the Reverend Dr. Titus Thorne. I reside at one ten South Bayou Street here in Mobile. I stand today to represent the Amysine Church. Not only do I pastor the Big Zion Amysine Church, but I also serve as residing elder of Mobile District. I'm also a proud member of Project One Hundred, which is initiative of voters' education for the Amysine Church. On last week, the city council attorney stated that the city council meeting is a place where the city council comes and conducts its business and informed us that it's not a place of debate and indicated that it should be taken as a place of privilege because the city council does not have to allow us to stand behind this mic and behind this podium to say anything. So I want to thank the mayor, the city council administration for allowing us this privilege, giving the concerned citizens the opportunity to speak almost fifty times, month after month, week after week, Tuesday after Tuesday, behind this mic and behind this podium, speaking on redistricting. Thanks. Almost fifty times, month after month, week after week, Tuesday after Tuesday, coming behind this mic, behind this podium, it's obvious, it's evidence apparent, it's undeniable, undisputable, that redistricting means a lot to the people of Mobile and the future of Mobile. Almost fifty times, we have expressed our concerns, demanding transparency, accuracy, accountability and have consideration for the people that elected you. The concerned citizens of Mobile presented a community map that best reflects the twenty-twenty census, allowing Mobile to be predominantly black city and giving Mobile opportunity to have black representation of four of the districts. Our hope is that after almost fifty times of coming to this mic and standing behind this podium, that this council has heard our concerns and seen the map. And to the mayor, to the city council administration, it's been a long process, contentious at times, but thank you for hearing our concerns and allowing us this privilege to come behind this mic, stand behind this podium for almost fifty times, speaking on redistricting. The banner that hangs on, on the front left side of the Chamber of Commerce building reads Believe in Mobile. I believe in Mobile. Look behind you, we all believe in Mobile. I also believe that the elected officials who have heard the concerns for the citizens almost fifty times, standing behind this mic, behind this podium, speaking on redistricting would do us right. Let's not take the mantra of one Mobile figuratively, where it's one person making one decision based on one map, but let's take the mantra of one Mobile collectively, that the citizens of the makeup district one through seven will come together with elected officials and make us one, One Mobile. John's Gospel, he said, let us all be one. That was a prayer that Jesus had and I pray that Mobile, we all become one. My prayer is that the council adhere to the concerns of the people that elect them to serve. But whatever our lives shall be, I pray that we move forward and work together to make Mobile the greatest city in America.
Thank you, Reverend Thorne. I'm gonna ask again, I heard someone from my right and my left interrupting Reverend while he was speaking and I'm gonna ask again to please give each speaker respect. Again, this is a council meeting where we handling business and let everybody be heard. Thank you so much.
Reverend Jim Flowers, followed by Reverend Clinton Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
President Small, Mayor Stimson. My name is Jim Flowers. I'm rector of All Saints Episcopal Church, one fifty-one South Anne Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero four. For seven months now, the Community Coalition has been speaking to this council, making its plea for voting districts that fairly reflect the black majority of this city. Just last week in this auditorium, the word racism was spoken out loud and one would have thought someone had pulled the fire alarm. The tension was palpable. Suffice it to say, emotions were evoked for some, including me, emotions got the better of us. But we should not be surprised by that. When it comes to matters of race, our collective discomfort is predictable. Brian Stevenson, Director of the Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, coined the phrase that racism in America, he calls our original sin. That means we still carry our racial, our racist heritage in our very DNA, white and black. It has scarred us both. Stevenson is not speaking of personal prejudices, he's speaking of a system, a system that was designed at the inception of this nation to disadvantage and exclude black citizens and women too, for that matter, not only from government, but also from educational and economic opportunity. Many of us have overcome to an extent our learned prejudices regarding people of color, but not so much with our institutions, not so much with the system itself. That is not to say that as a nation, we have tried. The Fifteenth Amendment, which sought to ensure black citizens the right to vote is a case in point, but state legislatures, including our own, undermine that constitutional mandate. In nineteen sixty-five, the Voting Rights Act was passed in order to reaffirm and enforce what the Fifteenth Amendment guaranteed in the first place, one person, one unimpeded vote. According to the Southern Poverty and Law Center, the mayor's proposed redistricting map does not meet the criteria and spirit of the Voting Rights Act. The Community Coalition has asked that this council approve the map we have submitted. It has been duly vetted and though it presents a minimal majority in a fourth black majority district, it is still, we believe, a step towards repairing a broken system. Though many of us, most of us, reject racism, it still infects our common life. None of us here owned enslaved people, none of us here have participated in a lynching, but we have inherited the wounds and the trauma of our original sin. We have the opportunity to begin repairing, healing the systemic injustice of racism. This is a profound historic moment. I ask respectfully that you vote for the Community Coalition's map. I ask that the vote be unanimous, sending a clear message that this city stands for the truth, that we stand for justice and that we offer wholeheartedly our trust. We have nothing to lose and we have everything to gain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clinton Johnson, followed by McKenday Gola-Hahn.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, Mayor Stimson. My name is Tinton L. Johnson. I reside at eleven zero one Dunaway Drive, Mobile, Alabama. For twenty-four years, I was wonderfully blessed by God and the citizens of Mobile to occupy the seat that you now occupy. One of the first to be a part of what was considered true representational government in the city of Mobile. I remember immediately after my election, I gave a speech about Mobile and it was entitled "A City of Perpetual Potential." And it was engendered in me to be encouraged to forge an effort, unhesitatingly, that would break the yoke of complacency, that would allow Mobile to be seen in the light of its true character and potential, representing all people everywhere, doing what best to make our community the best community. You now sit in those seats and I've sat back and I've admired the level of integrity, character, dignity and honesty that you have demonstrated as you've approached matters to deliberate, to make decisions about the future of this city and what kind of city it's going to be. I know that's not easy. I know it's difficult. Some who speak to us may not know that because they do not sit in those seats. And so you have an opportunity today to plot a course, to set in motion to send a message, not only to the citizens of Mobile, but people who are watching us, that we are not afraid, but we are in fact a city of one, concerned about the needs of people everywhere and have forged a union between ourselves to make sure that we make a difference because of an express heart full of concern for everybody, that this allows us to ever act selfishly and ever to act only for self. And so this matter has been a long and laborious journey and you have done well to do, to address it and to make ready a vote today. It speaks volumes about the future of our city, the nature and character of our city and its citizens. I'm hopeful that there is hopefully a favorability of a consensus toward your ordinance oh-two, oh-three-nine and that you might strongly consider voting for that ordinance. I commend you for the challenge before you. I commend you for the decision that you are going to make and I thank God that you have been chosen to serve, to help this city to be a better city. And I just want to thank you for your work, for your labor, for your struggle, for your effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
McKenday, McKenday Gola-Hahn, and followed by Gary Hart.
And again, I'm gonna ask the audience again to please cease your talking, give each speaker respect. Sorry about that.
Councilman and mayor, McKenday Gola-Hahn. I am at one six five six Laurelville Street, three six oh four, Mobile, Alabama. I rise in support of zero two zero two nine. And I like to say, I was here and many of you was here during the time that we had an at-large form of government here in Mobile. And the scars from that process have left many parts of our residents still suffering from scars of that kind of form of government. I do not know exactly what have motivated some of the proposals that is before you, but I know the end results would be many of our citizens would be, not be involved in the process of making decisions in the government, in this, in the city. So I'd just like to appeal to say that during the time that we as a community decided to come together and try to establish a much more democratic form of government and we have moved forward and we have came a long ways since then. But I look at this present proposals that's coming before you as a setback, going back to a period where there's a lot of division, a lot of animosity within our city. So I'm hoping, there's a word that we use in Africa called arambe, that mean we need to pull together. And we don't need to have two cities, we just need to have one city and go forward and not backwards. A lot of the things that I want to say, many of the speakers before me have already expressed, but I'm hoping that the council will see the wisdom in what they said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary Hart, followed by Sabrina Mass.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Gary Hart. I reside at four one four Illinois Court, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh eight, District Seven. I'm here to speak on the redistricting and the map that the mayor introduced was agreed to by all seven council members who made changes prior to the appearance on the agenda. These alternate maps were drawn up by third-party groups or other council members. The first map that I support balances the population. It also goes beyond what the Voting Act requires by increasing the black voting age majority to fifty-one percent. This map makes the least amount of changes to the districts. It has the least amount of disruption and it is legal. The mayor's map also allows for most of the people to continue being represented by the persons that they just elected. I live in District Seven and I'm part of the majority population and I support my council member, Gina Gregory, and I support the mayor's map.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sabrina Mass, followed by, I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce this name. I'll spell it A Q U O L K U O T on Cherokee Street.
Good morning. Good morning to the city council, to Mayor Stimson and Ms. Lambert and the staff. I have not spoke on the redistricting since the whole conversation started. I've been just sitting back in the audience, watching everyone, listening, determining what I would like to say or do. So I am here today, I'm sorry, did I get my address from Lambert? I did. Ten fifty Beverly Hills Circle West, Sabrina Mass, excuse me. Today, I would like to say as a citizen of the United States of America, first of all, as we all are, I am definitely going to invoke my right to freedom of speech and freedom of expression. I find myself very well-groomed and versed on the Constitution and state laws because that's what I've been doing since I was a teenager. I study it, I learn it, I know it. However, I want to say as a mother and a retired Air Force wife, a retired nurse, a grandmother, a citizen, a community activist, even being appointed by you beautiful people to be on the Human Relations Commission. So I speak for many citizens, all citizens in this city, some that are here and some that cannot be here. The redistricting is very important. It will impact every single citizen in this city. It will be very impactful. We face laws of people trying to strip us right now of our voting rights. In our city, we should be free to make decisions because the last time I checked above the Constitution, it says, "We the people." "We the people" is the first thing that it says before we go into the Constitution. "We the people." "We the people" have a right to say, "This is what we would like and this is what we would not like." We entrust that city council members, the mayor, that you guys will make decisions based on what we need in this city. Nothing is personal. This is business. We have families out here. We have friends out here. Nobody wants to come, I don't believe, to cause disturbance, division, and if they do, shame on them. I know a lot of times people see me in the audience laughing and smiling. I have nothing to say about anybody bad. I just like peace and unity. And I will say this, and I'm gonna sit down. And I will say this, and I'm gonna sit down. I entrust that all the city council members sitting here that are appointed to your seats will make the best decision, the right decision, the smart decision. I, I, I entrust that you would do that because I know each and every one of you. You have integrity, you have honor. People love you in this city, some people don't. I have nothing against anybody. I just want each citizen to go out here, be peaceful. Let's, let's, let's love each other. Mayor Stimson, I know you have a hard job.
Thank you, Ms. Mass.
And I'd like to say everybody, I love y'all too.
Thank you.
Okay, Agwin, uh, and followed by Agwin is Tony Allgood.
Hello, how are you guys? It's such a pleasure to be here. Uh, my name is actually pronounced Agul, and it's spelled A-G-U-L. Last name is K-U-O-T. Uh, I am here, uh, my, my, I'm here today to represent, first of all, my country, USA. I'm here to represent the city of Mobile, and I'm here to represent 264 Cherokee Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36606. And this is such an important, uh, event for me because I am a youth. I'm twenty-five years old. I went to Murphy High School, attended University of South Alabama. And I knew that it was such an important event for me because I don't have a car, but I bike here today. I tied my dress up and I biked here, but I am so blessed that I live in a city that is walkable, is bikeable, so I was able to get here on time. Um, and to me, it's such an important, uh, that you guys make the right decision and, uh, district correctly because this is how you determine which resources to go to different communities, and it's so important that you guys make such a, uh, a just decision and, um, a fair because us young people, we are watching the way that you guys make decisions, and this is how we decide whether this is the community that we want to continue to stay in here and build here and be a part of the global innovation that is taking place all over the world where young people are building their communities. So this is why it's really, really important, and I know that this country, it's founded on the foundation of God, and when you're a godly woman or a godly man, you are a beacon of truth and light, you're a beacon of honesty and integrity. So without a doubt in my mind, I trust that our leaders are going to make the right decision because many of us do believe in God, and the key component, you know, of our religion is love and compassion, and I would like to see that, you know, throughout my city because I am a product of love and compassion. I do not have a home, I'm a refugee, and the city of Mobile took my family in, they educated me, uh, they built me up, they taught me, you know, everything that I needed to know in order to be able to not only navigate my city, but the world. I've been all over the world, Barcelona, Frankfurt, Germany, Casablanca, Toulouse, the list goes on. So I do have, uh, hope and without a doubt that Mayor, he's doing an excellent job because I actually know the city, I have a map of it in my head, I can get anywhere, and I see the change that is taking place here. So I know he's doing a great job and the leadership here is as well. So go, go Panthers and go Jaguars. God bless America and God bless City of Mobile.
Thank you so much.
Tony Allgood, followed by Sylvia Reed.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Reverend Tony Allgood, 214A, Cell Street, Mobile, 36607. The right to vote and be able to cast your ballot for the candidate of your choice is a powerful thing. It hadn't always been that way in this country. When this country was founded, only white men who owned property and a certain amount of property were able to vote. Slaves were not able to vote, indigenous population was not able to vote, women were not able to vote. Since that founding, there has been a continuous struggle for the right to vote. We know what happened with Jim Crow laws after the Civil War, and it was even to the point where you had to pay a poll tax to be able to vote. Poor white people and poor black people, if they could vote, couldn't afford the poll tax. We had the Civil Rights Movement, the Voting Rights Act. And those of us that were in that struggle, uh, we've arrived. We fooled ourselves. We hadn't arrived. Because what happened then, they turned around and started a war on drugs. The prison population-
Uh, excuse me, Reverend. Just stop this minutes, please. Again, I must ask, anyone has any type of electronic device, please put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated positions. It's like my nighttime saying it on this day. It's out of respect. If you can start, uh, Reverend, minutes where he was interrupted at, I appreciate it. I do apologize, Reverend.
Okay. The prison population at the time of the war on drugs increased from three hundred thousand in nineteen seventy to two million today. One in four black men come under the jurisdiction of the courts. One in four not have the right to vote. That's why Michelle Alexander, in her book, called it "The New Jim Crow." It was a way of taking away voting rights. In Alabama now, there are, uh, over a hundred thousand former felons who have the right to vote, but they don't know it. This has always been directed by race and class, particularly race. I'm white, I grew up in the South, I grew up Mississippi. I know what white privilege is. I also know what systemic racism is. I believe passing a plan that represents the majority of the population in this country would go a long ways toward addressing the issue of systemic racism and will give people hope for something to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Yeah, again, I do apologize for stopping you.
Sylvia Reed, followed by Reggie Hill.
Good morning, and I want to say-
Morning.
I am glad to be here today, and I want to give my respect to the leaderships of Mobile, and I, um, want to speak because I have been in Mobile now for quite a while, and I am a citizen of Mobile. I am a citizen of the United States of America, which means that as an in-home person that we do some things that-
Ms. Reed, give us your name and your address.
My, I'm sorry, that was one thing I had on my, uh, Sylvia Reed is my name, and I live at seventeen eighty-three Princetonwood Drive, uh, west, Mobile, Alabama.
Thank you.
And as I was saying, I thank God for being in your presence. I heard someone said that it is a privilege to be before you all, and it is a privilege to be before you all, but I also began to think that it's also a privilege for the, the people of Mobile to have chosen you all as their representative to do the things that they actually need to be done. And I was also looking at the point, uh, of the redistricting, and I kind of viewed it myself, and I heard some, uh, someone speaking here on trying to, the district was trying to give, uh, people of race the same, uh, representative in the, in the sense that if it's a majority of black, that they wanted a black leader, or you all were trying to give. And I, I think that is just so, uh, out of character to do it like that. I am a ver- very diverse person with a very diverse family, and we're very diverse in learning, and I have a biblical background in, in who my Lord and Savior is, which is Jesus. And as a city, you have a people of all diverse colors, so you want to look at the overall objective, but not trying to compare people according to race, and which I have noticed a lot in Mobile, that people are centered, it's kind of like you're shaping everybody together in who you think they are, or their size, or their education, or something. And all that is important because it do make up culture and everything, but the overall thing is that you all, my understanding, are employed by the people of Mobile, and what they are asking you all to do is very important to hear them and to know that you all represent a wide variety of people, of thoughts and, and everything else, and I, I want to get my voice in because I want you all to know that I'm not going to leave Mobile. I have not been treated just here, but I'm not going to leave Mobile. I'm gonna stay here and be one of those that fight my way through whatever, have to fight my way in order that justice arrive. I'm a person, I believe in diversity. I mean, if you look at my degree, it's got a little bit of everything in it. It became one of the first degrees to be known as "clarity degree." But to speak on that, it's not about the degree, it's about common sense a lot of times, common sense. You are hired by the people. The people are the voice, and if you, it's employers. You all represented all kinds of employers this morning. Those employers have accountability to who are over them. And it's very important, as when people choose you as leaders, that you understand you're actually employed by these people, and it is a privilege for these people to come before you.
Ms. Reed, uh, Ms. Reed, I apologize for stopping you, but the time has expired.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Have a good day.
Reggie Hill, followed by Robert Clopton. Uh, and Reggie Hill is speaking on 08675 and 67609650, 09651, 0200701, 033, and 02039.
The other ones, I actually sent communications as well, uh, so that y'all have time to look at it. I'll just wait to get that response. Then, thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk. You asked me what's wrong.
Name and address, please.
We have no more strong, the strong is gone.
Name and address, please.
Reggie Hill, 1007.
Thank you.
Center Street, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, uh, greetings. You asked me what's wrong. The strong is gone. We have no more strong. Since I was interrupted, I'll allow that since we're being respectful to the citizens. Let that sink in one more time. You asked me what's wrong. The strong is gone. We have no more strong. Since nineteen eighty-five, due to the great works of the late Senator Michael Figures, the city of Mobile has been a strong council, form of government. Yet since August of 2021, we have seen everything but that. Today's example is redistricting. Voter suppression laws have run rampant all over this country, so there is no surprise, uh, that this civic plague has found its way to the city of Mobile, Alabama. This reminds me of a similar abnormal voter-based irregularity experienced by US Representative from Selma, Alabama, Congressman Jeremiah Harrison, Jeremiah Harrison, excuse me, a man of color in eighteen seventy-eight. For the sake of time, I will discuss him and the forty-six United States Congress at a future date. Being known, our indifference is not portrayed through pigmentation, but rather in policy, thus creating a perpetual cycle of poverty, which ultimately sprouts to all other senseless inconveniences, too often labeled by neighborhood and zip code. While a minute fragment to a certain demographic of people whimper about fewer residents, yet still seem to possess all the power. This isn't about four to three or five to two, this is about a strong council, form of government. You each have an opportunity to make history by doing what is just. They all say there's a first time for everything. Gestures currently proposed by Mr. Stimson potentially set us back more than a century. And not to leave out others because we've had sentiments expressed up here, but the thing that was most alarming to me was the finessing of other people, saying that we got to get five votes for three different maps. One vote in here doesn't need a single vote, excuse me, one map in here doesn't need a single vote. And there is only one map that is overwhelmingly supported by the community. Why are we confused? What we decide today is going to determine the structure of this city for years to come. Please do what is right. Thank you.
Robert Clopton, followed by William Schutz.
Good morning to the council.
Morning.
I am Robert Clopton, 2612, Charlottesville Drive, Mobile, Alabama. Most of all that I had to say, or wanted to say today has already been said, so will not be repetitious, but I do have a confession to make. That confession is that as a child of the ultimate battle, the ultimate struggle, which was the civil rights movement, we had a vision of hope, had a vision of hope by Dr. Warren Luther King Jr. That vision was that no person would be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. That vision was that at one day, his children, white, black, and all colors would walk hand in hand. I have another confession to make. I heard Doctor, I mean Senator Robert F. Kennedy say at one time during that same era, that some people sees things that as they are and as why. I vision things that can never be and that's why not. I have a confession to make, that the dreams of both individuals was shattered months apart in nineteen sixty-eight by an assassin's bullet. I have another confession to make. It shattered my life and I made a, excuse me, I made a promise that I would continue their fight forever, and I have, as I work hard to ensure the educational, political, social, and economic equality of rights of all people at all times. And as I definitely support ordinance 0133, 010239 is definitely worth consideration as well. I have a confession. As I toured from North Alabama, I migrated from North Alabama by work of my career through the Black Belt and Two Mobile, arriving first in nineteen ninety-two, I was somewhat disappointed by the lack of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I left and returned, and now it's thirty minutes late, thirty years later, and it's sad to see that some of the concerns that we had at that time exist today. However, elected council, you have a great decision to make today, you have a historical decision to make today. It's not simple matters. Simple matters are these, we can go home and brush them aside, but this is one that you have to live with. When it comes to redistricting, we have to always remember, as leaders, as I am President of the NAACP, we have to do nothing of selfish ambition or vain intent. We must humble ourselves and put others before us. So please, let's do the right thing at the right time for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
William Schutz, followed by Linda St. John.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the mayor and the city council, I'm glad to be here and I thank you all for your service to the community. My name is William Schutz, and I'm from seventeen eighty-two Princetonwood Drive West. And I just believe Mobile is a, is a great city, and I just believe that we should grow to not grow on just our race, the difference, and we should, and color, but we should respect and celebrate the diversity that we have here in Mobile. And, uh, I support the map introduced by the mayor, which was agreed from by all the seven city council members and on the agenda. The alternate maps were drawn up by third-party groups, other city council members. The first map that I support balances the population, also goes beyond what the Voting Act requires. requires by increasing the black voting age majority to fifty-one percent. This map makes the least amount of changes to the district, it also does the least amount of disruption, and is legal. The mayor's map also allows for the most, for the people to continue to be represented by the person whom they elected. I also live in District Seven, and I just believe that I'm part of that majority that believe that the city council, that I spoke, Ms. Jenny Gregory, the obvious city councilman in District Seven. I just want to read a couple scripts that own this, not... Relation three twenty-seven said, "For you all that chose my God, I faith in Christ Jesus. There is neither Jew nor Greek, there is neither born nor free, there is neither male nor female, for you all one in Christ Jesus." And in Acts seventeen, it says that "for one blood he made one nation a man, and gave a place by the external state." Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no applause.
Linda St. John, followed by Reverend Brown.
I saw her in here. Okay. This is my first.
Uh...
Please.
Linda St. John, three twenty Avalon Street. I would just like to say, thank all of y'all for sixteen years of listening to everything that the Village of Spring Hill has been done. And I just want to go on record as saying that our organization is a community planning organization. It is not a political organization. Lately, our organization has been used to advance agendas that have absolutely nothing to do with our objectives. But despite, despite, despite this distraction, we plan to stay focused on our efforts to improve our Spring Hill community, and after redistricting is settled by the city council, we will work with all council representatives whose districts fall within the boundaries of the Village of Spring Hill to continue to advance our initiatives.
Thank you.
Reverend Corey Brown.
Greetings and good morning, Mr. Mayor and city council members.
Good morning.
My name is Reverend Dr. Corey D. Brown, Senior Pastor at a Friendship Baptist Church. I currently reside at one three one three Schillinger Road South, three six six nine five. I come to speak about today's vote on the redistricting of the city council districts. I was given a key to the city of Mobile in two thousand nineteen. I'm hoping that it unlocks something today. Decisions, decisions, decisions. City council indeed has a major decision to make. But in preparing to make your decisions, I want to challenge you to question yourselves of what genuinely and authentically drives your decisions. When deciding on which map to vote on and approve, allow me to suggest to you several key factors that should drive your decisions. Number one, the city of Mobile is at a crucible, critical, historical moment, and your decision today will have an impact for decades to come and will be recorded in the history books yet to be written. Number two, the city of Mobile can finally take the first of many necessary steps to ensure that all citizens of this great city have proper and adequate representation here in government plots. Number three, the city of Mobile has been confirmed and certified by the twenty-twenty U.S. Census that Mobile is not only a majority black city, but it is also underrepresented in city government for black citizens. Number four, the city of Mobile is legally and morally obligated to provide a fourth district which provides the black community the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. That's the law. Number five, this city council should conduct fair and just business for the betterment of the city, specifically its neglected black community, with equality and equity, and should not come with any strings attached like quid pro quos. Number six, the city council should not be wrongfully influenced to vote prematurely because a council member has seen the future annexation plan without critically thinking first and observing the current growth and diversities of the city. That kind of logic and reasoning is deeply troubling in these times of critical decisions. Number seven, finally, for those of you who profess to be Christian, will your conscience be clear? Will your spirit be at peace? Will your soul be right with God? The community has spoken. Community leaders have spoken that the right drivers help you determine the right decision for the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Ordinance is held over zero two zero zero seven, ordinance to provide for the reapportionment of the seven council districts in the city of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
Being properly moved is second in a discussion.
No, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
On the next three ordinance, I call for a roll call vote.
Um, I request for all three, uh, ordinance to be a roll call vote. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Council, Council President.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
On the first map, correct? I know we've heard from a lot of speakers today, and I'm sure that our council members will also have some time to make some comments as well. I am speaking now on the map that is currently before us. I'm the co-sponsor of this map. It's called the mayor's map, or map number one, since we have three maps now. It was put on our agenda in February, and it's the only map that all seven council members had a hand in drawing up. It's the only map where seven of us agreed on changes to our districts. And you have to remember that any time a line was drawn or changed, that it impacted at least one or two other districts. It's the only map that I've been involved in or consulted about. If we were voting today on our own districts, the way this map is drawn, I think it would be approved because we all approved the way our districts was drawn. Until some didn't, things started changing. The first issue, before even map number one was introduced, was making sure that District Seven had a black voting age majority, because you all know the population changed, things had to change. So we made those changes by shifting a couple of census blocks, nearly fifty-one percent when it ended up. I worked with Councilman Penn and Jones to make those happen because their lines had to change as well. But then, that majority, or just over the majority, that fifty-one percent wasn't enough in District Seven. That's the only district that had anybody asking questions about or wanting to make changes in. We began hearing that the number had to be fifty-three percent. If not, then the majority population in my district couldn't elect the candidate of their choice. And then, as time went on and more speakers came down to the council meeting, it began sounding like they didn't think that I could represent the majority population in my district. They said fifty-three percent was the number. One reason I believe fifty-three percent is the number is because it reflects a specific census block, which is the north side of Spring Hill Avenue. For six months, I've listened, and I've tried not to be offended. You know, we've, we've all listened. After all, what's being said down here at the podium isn't personal, we've heard that, it's, it's just politics. And I put myself out there, I'm the politician, I have to deal with whatever criticism is leveled at me. But I'm offended for the people in my district, who I know are more than capable of supporting and electing a candidate of their choice without people from outside the district trying to determine what those districts' lines should be in order to guarantee some kind of specific outcome in the next election. District Seven has been, and it is currently, the battleground in this redistricting effort. My district, the one I have represented for seventeen years, the one I've directed nearly twenty million dollars in capital funds for projects, and that was just since we began the CIP. And Clint, you remember all those years when we didn't have that much money, we were still doing the best we could to put money in our districts, and I did. It's the district where I've contributed tens of thousands of dollars in discretionary funds to homeowners associations and community action groups for their neighborhoods. I've picked up litter, old tires, purchased and given out school supplies, backpacks, Christmas gifts. I've sponsored food drives and handed out bags of food for people who wouldn't have any at Thanksgiving or Christmas. I've helped set up COVID vaccine clinics, built entrance markers, sidewalks, and installed lights. I funded park improvements. Right now, we are in the middle of transforming Langen Park, and it is a huge, huge project. I was the cheerleader for finally getting Ziegler Boulevard widened, that's going on right now, and making sure that the administration found the funding necessary to make it happen and make it a priority for them. I've also had a hand in making sure that the new fire department, or fire station in District Seven, had state-of-the-art equipment. I've handled complaints about city services, and rather than telling these residents who call me, "Well, just call three one one," when things weren't done the right way or the way these residents wanted, I've stepped in to try to make sure that they work. I've met on site to look at many, many drainage ditches, blinded properties, potholes, crumbling concrete, sinking streets, speeding traffic, you name it. I've been there, and I've done it all to help resolve problems for everyone in my district. I've attended and hosted more meetings in district-wide and in neighborhoods than I can possibly count. I've worked to make my district and my city a better place for everyone to live, to work, and to play. So why does this sound like a campaign speech? Yeah, good question. Why does it? I shouldn't have to make a campaign speech in order to let people know how we have represented the district, how I have been able to represent my district, because it was only less than a year ago now that I was re-elected with eighty percent of the vote. I won every district handling. Some of my most ardent supporters, and you've heard from a few, we've gotten some emails from a few of them, stood with me day in and day out during the campaign, and they are in the majority population of District Seven. Some of these folks have been with me since day one. District Seven has long mirrored the demographic makeup of the city, and I am proud of how we all work together in every neighborhood. That's something that we bragged about in this last campaign, about how District Seven is really a role model for the entire city. Now, who else can say that? The goal of redistricting, as we all know, and has been said, is to balance the population so that each district has about the same number of residents. And in our case, that's about twenty-six thousand plus or minus, while causing the least amount of disruptions and changes in the current lines, leaving neighborhoods and communities of interest intact. Redistricting is not about guaranteeing any sort of outcomes for candidates, current or future. Map number one, the mayor's map, as you've heard, of course, is legal, balances population, it adheres to the Voting Rights Act by providing or maintaining the majority voting age population in districts one, two, and three, and of course, now seven. The Voting Rights Act requires that we get as close to possible for a black voting age majority when we redraw the lines, but it does not require that you go above a majority. It says get as close as possible. Here in Alabama, there's a case pending in federal court, you all may be familiar. It's interesting to read what the plaintiff's notes say, and I quote, "The evidence of racially polarized voting in this case shows that realistic opportunity to elect likely requires districts that approach or surpass a majority black voting age population." And that's exactly what the mayor's map does. In the last six months, you know, I've heard all kinds of rumors, we've all heard lots of rumors, there's been a lot of talk, a lot of discussion about whether I was going to run again in three years. Some people said, "Well, you know, Gina's not running, so it doesn't matter how these lines are drawn in District Seven, she's not running, it doesn't matter." I also know that some folks maybe are a little afraid that, uh, you know, if we don't have a fifty-three percent black voting age in my district, that if I do run, I could still win. Who knows? And I've also been told by some of my supporters, that they've even been approached to turn on me, to say something negative. You know, ladies and gentlemen, redistricting today, redrawing these lines, is not about me for District Seven, or any of these other districts. It's not about these people who are sitting up here today. It is about three years down the road when a new election comes along, and that's when this will take effect. Map number two, sponsored by Councilman Carroll, and map number three, sponsored by Councilman Carroll, Penn, and Reynolds, basically have the same negative impact on District Seven. They're just switching one side of Spring Hill Avenue for another. You know, I've got to say that if I was getting involved in redrawing lines in other districts of my council members and negotiating for these different maps, without even the courtesy of a phone call, a meeting, I can only imagine what the reaction would be. But it's happened. Annexation, not on our agenda today, but certainly has been part of this underlying discussion for the last six months or so. I support an opportunity for residents who live on our western borders, just outside the city, to be able to vote, to become citizens of our city. I voted in favor of the last annexation proposal and the ones before that. I've heard some of my colleagues say that, um, you know, whatever redistricting map is enacted today, well, it'll only be temporary because redistricting's coming. Not redistricting, annexation is coming, and then that would mean that the lines would have to be redrawn, so it doesn't really matter what map is enacted today. But I beg to differ on that, because if it's only temporary and it doesn't matter, then why wouldn't we vote on the map that we've all agreed on? So while it's true that if annexation proposal does go forward and if residents vote to come into the city, those district lines will probably have to be redrawn, and if that happens, chances are very good that District Seven will grow organically and increase the black voting age majority to fifty-three percent. And that's that magic number we kept hearing about. Again, I support an annexation proposal going forward. But there's no guarantee that any of that will happen. We'll just have to see. Annexation comes later. My constituents trust me to do the right thing. Voting for the mayor's map, the only map that all seven of us had a hand in designing, and we all agreed to, is doing the right thing.
Any other discussions? I would like to, uh, say, uh, before we call for the vote, uh, the roll call vote, that is, that, um, we have two ordinance in front of, excuse me, three ordinance in front of us that's dealing with the redistricting. We have ordinance zero two dash zero zero seven, and that's map number one, which is the mayor's map, dash zero one dash zero three three, which is the community map, that's map number two. And we also have zero two dash zero three nine, which is the, uh, compromise council map, which is map number three. And I'm gonna go ahead and make my remarks now, and I'll be done. Um, I will sustain my vote on, uh, ordinance, uh, zero two dash zero zero seven, which is the mayor's map. And also, I will sustain my vote on zero one dash zero three three, which is the community map. Since being on this council, um, was appointed back in twenty twelve, one thing I learned that you have, I learned that you have to negotiate. Uh, politics is not fair, and sometimes, you know, riding on the right thing is not always there, you know? Um, I do appreciate, you know, the mayor, uh, Chief Barber and his administration for map number one. I do know for a fact that they had went to each council member and asking them about their opinions. Um, I do appreciate, uh, Councilman... I do appreciate Councilman Gregory and also Councilman Dave for stepping up to be one of the sponsors. I was once a sponsor of the Mayor's Map, and at the time, I thought it had to be by law, someone from the council had to sponsor it. And I found out later better. And when my two colleagues decided to step up, I stepped down because I wasn't really in agreement with everything on the Mayor's Map. The Mayor's Map, which is all about some of the rest of the maps, you know, had caused for parts of Maysville be cut out of District Three. District Three has a long, outstanding history of having Maysville inside of it. Matter of fact, the part that gonna be cut out, I really support that area wholeheartedly around Revelation Missionary Baptist Church. Matter of fact, I got some CIP money going into Baumhauer, also known as Dubois Street Park, you know, in the next couple, in the next year or so. A bunch of money, the first time annexation was, second time annexation was brought up, you know, to the old council, I voted no. And that was like the first thing I had posted up on this projector behind me was that part, the conditions of that part. So now, we got some CIP money going into that part, but guess what? In order to help District Two out with the black population of voting, I had to give that area up. I mean, I had pumped a lot of money into the area, especially CIP money, from doing sidewalks, you know, dealing with Maysville Community Action Group, you know, even having, you know, trick-or-treat Halloween fun around there. But it's gonna be cut out of District Three, and that's something that I had to give up. I do, again, support, excuse me, again, I like to thank the community for their map, map number two. I'd like to thank every speaker that been coming down here for several months. As one of the Republicans said, you know, fifty-plus times, you know, I heard you say fifty-three percent. You know, the map show, the Mayor's Map shows only fifty, fifty point something percent, but your map showed fifty-three percent. But there was some questions about, you know, blocks, and, you know, wasn't corrected at the time. And from my understanding, you know, Councilman Carroll is gonna make amendment to that particular resident ordinance to make sure that the blocks are corrected. But again, I haven't even sat down with our attorney to vet it, to make sure, is it correct that what I would I be voting on? I'm not just gonna sit up here and vote on something just blind-sided at the time, especially without getting advice from my attorney. But again, I do thank the community for being involved in this process. That means a lot, to hear the community come down and asking what they want, or telling us what they want, rather. You know, I also like to thank Councilman Reynolds for leading the charge with the Compromise Map. You know, putting the mayor map together and the community map together and try to make a compromise. And I also thank my colleagues, Penn and Carroll, for being sponsors of that third map. You know, with the Mayor's Map and the community, what they really asked for is the fifty-three percent. If I'm not mistaken, the third map just gives us just a little bit more than fifty-three percent, just a little, one or two percentage more over. So I think it's like fifty-three point something, fifty-three point two percent. And so that's the reason why I will be supporting, you know, the Compromise Map. And another reason I'm gonna be supporting it, because one of my colleagues in District Six, I believe that he lost two communities that supported him. And with this Compromise Map, he'd get those two communities back, if I'm not mistaken. And so again, you know, District Three, we still left out. I still don't have Maysville. And even if annexation do come forth, you know, and just say for, you know, District Seven, you know, she's still gonna lose Spring Hill, but I'm still not gonna get Maysville back. Matter of fact, I'm gonna get an area that gonna cost District Three more money, you know, and they are well aware of that, you know? But again, in order to push my city forward, make sure that I see my city grow, you know, some things that I have to encounter. So I'm still being at the bottom of the list. District Three still being at the bottom of the list. And if annexation comes, and again, I'll only support it, only support it if it's done correctly. But if annexation ever comes, you know, District Three gonna need more money, because again, we are going to inherit some areas. Nothing gets my colleague Reynolds, because I have been hollering about this even, you know, with your predecessor, but it gonna come with some responsibilities. And I'm putting it out there just like it is. We gonna need more money. Again, everything I wanted, I didn't get. Again, we focus on now on District Seven, making sure that they give fifty-three percent. But my concern is why, again, I gave up parts of Maysville, because I'm not only concerned about District Three and maintaining the black voice, because Senator Michael Figurs fought hard for African-American have voices in this city, along with other state representatives. But I'm also worried about District Two. You know, that's why I gave parts of Maysville up to District Two. Today, we talking about District Seven. But what I'm worried about in the next ten years, in the next ten years, I'm gonna say it again, in the next two years, I'm worried about District Two flip, you know, from a majority African-American to Caucasian. I'm not racist. I'm about diversity. But I'm also making sure that everybody have a voice at the table. So again, we focusing on Seven, but my thing about it is I'm also looking ahead of time in the next ten years and worry about District Two, making sure that we keep our voice at the table, especially in that district. And again, anybody can run in a district, black, white, Chinese, whatever, and if the citizens elect them, that's fine, but as long as we have the opportunity to be at the table, I'm gonna make sure that people of color have that opportunity to be at the table. So that is why I am supporting the council Compromise Map for the third map, make sure that, one, diversity's there, and, two, make sure that I work with my colleagues, work with the administration, and make sure that we negotiate, work with the community, make sure that we negotiate. This is just one thing, we got another three years to go. This not gonna be the only thing that we gonna have be facing us, and we got to work together. And today, by voting for the third map, compromising, negotiating, meaning that we working together. And again, I will be voting for the third map. And again, I do appreciate the administration, I appreciate my colleagues, I appreciate the community, I appreciate the speakers. And again, wherever this vote goes today, and just to put it out there, if all three maps are voted down, the mayor map goes into effect. That's gonna be the map. But if one of the votes, excuse me, if one of the maps do get voted on today, that's the map that gonna get, be in effect. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry.
This is ordinance zero-two-zero-zero-seven. Councilmember Penn?
Abstain.
Councilmember Carroll?
Abstain.
Councilmember Small?
Abstain.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
All right, fails.
Ordinance zero-one-zero-three-three, ordinance to provide for the reapportionment of the seven city council districts for the city of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
Reproport to move to second, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to amend ordinance zero-one-zero-three-three to correct the eight blocks that are located outside the city. The clerk and the attorney both have the information provided.
The amended version is on Nova.
The amended version is where?
Is on Nova.
Yes.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Reproport to move to second, any other discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk?
This is on the amendment, correct?
Right, this is on the amendment.
Uh, Mr. President?
Ms. Carroll?
I'll take a full vote on the amendment and a roll call vote on the original motion after being amended.
Okay. All in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All opposed? That, that's, so just wanted some ended. Madam Clerk?
Okay, zero-one-zero-three-three. Councilmember Penn?
Abstain.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Abstain.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Gregory? Ordinance zero-two-zero-three-nine, ordinance to provide for the reapportionment of the seven council districts in the city of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
Reproport to move to second, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
This has been a long road, and I'm glad we're finally here to call for the question. I want to say thank you to the mayor and all the hard work that they have done. I'm telling you, I thought it was wonderful for them to bring us together and get our individual take on the lines. Their approach was very pragmatic, and they didn't want to change a line to affect another councilperson without that councilperson agreeing to it. And I think that was the right approach. I mean, could you imagine? You gotta make it all work for seven people who represent seven different interests for their thirty, approximately thirty thousand people. So they did a great job at that. And I think it's a legal plan. But I didn't have the confidence that it had five votes for this council, and I think it's important that we have some consensus going forward over the next three years to show, not to just the people out there, but to ourselves, that we have the ability to vote with each other. We have the ability to find common ground and work towards a best solution for the citizens of Mobile. And then the community plan, you know, I don't have really any major objection to the community plan either. I think it has merit, and it obviously satisfies a lot of our constituents' concerns, although as we just saw, there just isn't five votes for it. So again, you know, in order to find consensus and a way forward, I thought it was important that we tried to thread the needle. So after looking at the two maps, I think what we've come up here, although not everyone's gonna be happy, not everyone's gonna be satisfied, and it wasn't cer, it certainly wasn't targeting any one councilperson, it just was the common ground, it seems. And there were some significant changes that I think benefited every district that was affected. And the mayor's plan, the neighborhood cobblestone, was not gonna be a part of District Seven. District Seven lost that. In this plan, District Seven gains back that neighborhood. And District Six, Councilman Jones, he was losing a very highly sought-after neighborhood that has been part of District Six for some time in regency. And in this plan, District Six gains that back. Councilman Penn, just five or six blocks, maybe ten blocks, I don't know the exact number, from his church, where he, you know, that's his community, and the community plan, he lost that. In this plan, he gains that back. And then Spring Hill, which has been a topic of discussion with UDC and various other legislation that's been put forward, I felt it was important that if the Village of Spring Hill is being created as an overlay district in our UDC, then it should, we should make every attempt to try to keep it whole and as one. And moving it from seven to five is another piece to that puzzle, to keep it as a Village of Spring Hill that fits with the UDC and now redistricting. There is no question, there is no doubt, and it's been undisputed since this entire process started, that there has been a great migration of our population, both black, white, and everything in between, from the east part of our city to the west part of our city. And there's only so much you can do to draw these lines in a way that accounts for that without disrupting longstanding relationships. For example, in District Four, the River Park community down on the river, and Morningside and Navco, District Four loses that as part of this. And that's a painful loss for District Four, but it's required of us. That's what we're here to do. So although Councilwoman Gregory may feel like this is aimed at her, it's certainly not. She has proven her leadership for a number of years, that she is a good voice for her people, all people in her district. And I think she quoted something like twenty million dollars she's been able to direct to her district over her time in service. My records show that there's been over thirty million dollars that she has been able to direct to her constituents in District Seven since 2016, whereas several other districts don't quite get that much. Now, I'm not talking about District Two, District Two certainly got a lot, but if anyone up here, since my, I've been on this council for the short period of time I've been here, has illustrated that they are looking out for their constituents better than anybody else, anybody could expect, it's Councilwoman Gregory. So I, I, I hope that we can get seven for this. It's been my hope all along to try to get seven votes and understanding that there is compromise that has to be had. I think this represents that compromise, and I ask my council, my fellow colleagues, to vote along with me in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Comment was made, or question was made, what drives us in our decision today? Just made a little while ago. For me, the answer is easy. I was given by a mentor of mine and a friend, a number of verses to guide me through my term over the next four years. And one of those, I looked at this morning, it's Proverbs two, ten, and eleven. It says, "When wisdom entereth into thine heart, and knowledge is pleasant unto thy soul, discretion shall preserve thee, understanding shall keep thee." H.G. Wells said that human history is, in essence, a history of ideas. Brent Hart took that a step further to say that ideas achieve historical significance only when they serve as the basis for action. Today, here in Mobile, is a day that demands this body act on a series of ideas that will serve as a foundation to future actions that must be taken to move this great city forward. Over the past number of months, we've heard hours of debate, held countless meetings, both formal and informal, had hours of discussion, and reviewed countless maps. We've heard varying concepts about what is fair, just, or legal. One of the greatest driving factors to me is what I must do for my constituents that elected me. And that is to take care of my district and do what is in the best interest of this city. It is important to understand that when we look at these decisions, we don't look at who we are today or where we are today, but whether that this be a district or this city, what I'm voting on passes with a supermajority vote. What does this do to my district and city over the course of the next ten years, twenty years, or fifty years? One fact that I can rely on, not everyone in this city is going to be happy with the outcomes that take place today. Webster's New World Dictionary defines compromise as "primarily a settlement in which each side gives up some demands or makes concessions." Compromise today can mean the difference between failure and success. I've been very vocal in my stance that I would not vote for any redistricting map until such time as there was an annexation map on the table at the same time. The rationale behind that for me was simple. I did not want to spend months repeating the same processes that we just went through in this city. I still feel that way. With that said, the With that said, the truth of where I was at changed on the twenty ninth of July, when I found that a new map had been submitted and was going to be placed on the agenda on the second of August. I was not consulted about that map. I was not consulted about the change in my district. And it did change my district in a most significant way that has resulted in many phone calls and emails that my constituents have asked me to support. After numerous conversations with my friend and colleague Cory Penn, I also believe that my supporting this map helps to heal this city from those who believe that we are divided by race. Something that he and I have had many discussions about before either of us were even sworn in. Both believe that we could work collectively to change that for the better. In many of the requests that were presented to this body over the months before us, we were asked to trust that community leaders would help move us forward to growing this city if we could support the initiative to achieve fifty-three percent black voting age population in District Seven. I believe that your voice is sincere as I vote in favor of this ordinance for this map. In closing, I'm leaning on Ephesians three seventeen to nineteen as I close my comments, and these verses say this. "That Christ may dwell in your hearts by faith, that ye being rooted and grounded in love may be able to comprehend with all saints what is the breadth and length and depth and height, and to know the love of Christ, which passeth knowledge, that ye might be filled with the fullness of God."
End of discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Penn?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
I'm staying.
It passes. And audience, 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 okay. Um, Councilman Dave, Carroll, and then the mayor.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. As a result of the twenty twenty federal census, the city of Mobile was required to redraw a city council district. The census had revealed that fifty-three percent of the population was black. Importantly, the city's voting age population was fifty percent black. Federal law, specifically the Voting Rights Act, required that the city create a fourth district with enough minority population to elect a minority candidate of choice. The mayor, excuse me, the mayor introduced his proposed plan on February fifteenth. Under applicable law, the mayor had six months from the date upon which the twenty twenty census data was received to present a plan to the city council. The city council then had six months to alter it if it so chose. If the city council fails to either adopt the mayor's plan or enact a new pl- substitute plan within six months, the mayor's plan becomes law. Under the plan submitted by the mayor, City Council District Seven, can you get me, someone get me some water?
Uh, hold on, Councilman Dave, as you get some water. If anyone would like to leave, you may do so at this time. If anyone would like to leave, you may do so at this time.
Councilman Dave? Under the plan submitted by the mayor, City Council District Seven was redrawn so as to include an African-American voting age population of fifty point five percent, slightly above the percent of the city's voting age black population. I believe that the plan submitted by the mayor met the requirements of the law in terms of providing black residents of our city the opportunity to elect four black members of the city council if they so chose. Our objective should have been to meet the requirements of the law with as little disruption to the existing districts as possible. I believe the mayor's plan accomplished this objective, which is why I supported it. In my time on the city council, I have always tried to do what is best for the city of Mobile as a whole. I now believe that this particular issue we decided today is of sufficient magnitude that it became imperative for the future of our city that the city council find consensus on a plan rather than allow the mayor's plan to take effect by default. As I said, I thought the mayor's plan accomplished the objectives of the law with as least disruption as possible. I voted for it. It failed. I then voted for Plan Number Two, the community plan, because I thought it was the next best plan. It met the law with, uh, as, with less disruption than Plan Three. It failed. Ultimately, I voted for Plan Three because it was the only one available today that would gain a consensus of the city council. My vote will disappoint and possibly anger individuals who have been in the past, who have in the past supported me and with whom I have worked. I understand their disappointment and anger. I'm not happy with the vote myself. But in the end, I had to do what I thought was best and the best long-term interests of the city as a whole. It is important to note that citizens will continue to be represented by the person they elected last year until the next municipal election in two thousand twenty-five. As I have said in the past, we are all in this vote together. What is good for the city as a whole is good for all of its citizens regardless of what district they live in. What's bad for the city of a whole, uh, uh, what's bad for the city as a whole is bad for all of the citizens regardless of what district they live in. We either sink or swim together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Carroll?
Um, Mr. President, I've said so much throughout this process. I've talked to you all so much, to members of the community, clergy, leaders, representatives, to so many people in the community in hopes that we would get to an opportunity on consensus where we could all support it based on the census count in the population. I'm elated to see that we have found a way to get to that point today, and I'm astounded. What started by resolution to the mayor's office and a quiet conversation with the attorney was, "I would like to see this process be the most open, transparent process that any city in the state of Alabama has gone through." Both the administration and the council consented to that by resolution. Mobile can say that this process, this time, has had input from everybody. Everybody that wanted to come down here for twenty-eight weeks and speak to an item about reapportionment and redistricting of the city of Mobile. To see that reapportionment and redistricting matches the opportunity of the population of our city. So I can't say that this compromise map is not the community's, because it is. If it hadn't been for your constant drumbeat, your constant request, then today's opportunity would not have ever been realized. We have, or I came to this council in two thousand five, and I came with a tremendous ally in Ms. Gregory. She has represented District Seven beyond fathom with the greatest ability and will probably continue to represent District Seven. So, a- and I count her as an ally and hope to continue to count her as a li- ally and, and lavish in the leadership that she provides for that district. So, let's move forward from this day, knowing that we now, as, uh, that song says, "We turn to face a rising sun of a new day begun. Let us march on. Let us march on." We have other challenges coming before us, other challenges. And, and the process will go on. You know, some of you looked at this and called me and, and swore this was a quid pro quo, but I promise you it wasn't. There will come a request for growth in the city. This city does need to grow. But it has to be, as I stated on November first on inauguration day. It has to be fair, it has to be equitable, and it has to be just for everybody in this city, everybody. So, thank you to all my colleagues for voting for this, whether for or against. Thank you to the city, its citizens, and everybody that continued to beat the drums for this day. There's never been, in the, in the three hundred and twenty years that Mobile's existed since seventeen oh two, a chance for minorities to have the majority of districts if we so choose to elect someone like us. So, thank you all, and let's get ready for the, the next opportunity that the city of Mobile faces. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, audience, audience, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you. The city council has spoken, but I will say this, that since we began the redistricting effort in January, we've led a transparent process that has included input from the administration, the city council, and our community. Our goal was always to end with a map that represented all the city of Mobile's population. In February, the administration submitted a proposed map by input from each city councillor and the community. In fulfilling their obligation and responsibility, up until right now, the city council continued to seek feedback from their constituents culminating in a redistricting plan that meets all of our collective goals. Today's action by the council represents an end to the most transparent redistricting process, uh, in the city of, in the history of the city of Mobile. I want to commend our staff, especially Chief of Staff Jim Barber, each of the city councillors, and all the members of the community who took part in this important civic effort ensuring that each citizen has representation in their city government. We will embrace the council's decision and continue to work collaborati- collaboratively with the city council and with all citizens to create one Mobile. Let's go do it.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Um, I would like to thank the administration, my colleagues. Today is history. Imagine, imagine your community working together. I said it when I first, when we first started the process, that we're gonna figure this out together. I believe we did that. Imagine the city growing and people moving back to the city of Mobile. Imagine new homes. I believe by working together, we can do it, but we can't stop at imagining because that's the problem sometimes. We have to move to igniting, and how do we do that? We do that, what we did today. We do that by what we've been doing as a council. We do that by working together and not against each other. But the problem is that we stop at igniting and we just do it, just us. We don't move to the next step. And what is that next step? Is inspiring the next generation like that young lady, twenty-five years old. She wanted to get here today for history. She rode a bike. That's what it's about. It's about imagining, it's about igniting, and it's about inspiring the next generation. I'm proud to represent this city. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance sixty-four zero three eight, rezoned property located at sixteen eighteen twenty and twenty-two South Florida Street from R one and B two to R three.
So moved?
Second.
Improper move is second, end of discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Zero three six zero eight, approve appointments of new directors of improvement district of Mcgawrim Park project. Zero eight six four six, approve purchase orders for fuel for various city locations. Zero eight six forty-seven, approve purchase order to cha- charge point for annual renewal of cloud and equipment maintenance services for EV charging stations. Zero eight six forty-eight, approve purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for annual license renewal for GIS mapping software. Zero eight six forty-nine-
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. I'm asking if anyone has any type of conversation, if you can just take it outside this chamber, please? Just one minute, Madam Clerk has people exiting out. Sorry about that, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Zero eight six forty-nine, approve purchase order to quick buildings for classroom office building for Mobile Fire and Rescue Training Center. Zero nine six fifty, authorize a one-time lump sum payment and to eligible retirees and beneficiaries of the city of Mobile. Zero nine six fifty-one, authorize a one-time lump sum payment to eligible members and eligible surviving beneficiaries of the City of Mobile, Alabama Police and Fire Pension Fund. Twenty-one six fifty-two, authorize contract with Southern Grease Hauling for grease trap inspections, maintenance, and pumping at various city facilities. Twenty-one six fifty-three, authorize contract with Public Safety Traffic Signal Preemption Services. Twenty-one six fifty-four, authorize contract with Dakin Street for consultant services for office renovations at two hundred Government Street. Thirty-one six fifty-five, authorize a grant application to the Alabama Historical Commission for the Certified Local Government Grant Program Supporting Digitalization Efforts by the Mobile Historic Development Office. Twenty, thirty-seven six fifty-six, approve certificate of public convenience and necessity to MobCity Rides to operate an LSV golf cart service. Sixty-six fifty-seven, adopt the Title VI update for Parks and Recreation Department and Wave Transit System.
So moved?
Second.
Improper move is second, end of discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Say, I don't pass this.
Ordinances, ordinances being introduced, sixty-four zero forty through sixty-four zero forty-one.
My council rules, uh, these ordinances will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, the zero three six fifty-eight through zero three six eighty-three.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions with the exception of forty dash six six zero and forty dash six six one, right?
No, six six one, forty dash six six one.
Right, those two, yeah.
No.
No, no, but we gotta take them up in order to lay them over.
Because they have to be laid over, um, tabled and, uh, laid over for sixty days.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right.
We're taking those, yeah. I'll just take them separately.
Separately, okay.
Yes.
We're in, proper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
03658, reappoint Carolyn Green to the advisory commission on the disabled. 40659, 662, 663, 664, 665, 666, 667, 668, 669. Are declaring the structures at 2765 College Street, 3201 Central Road, 657 Donald Street, 164 Hemley Avenue, 502 Stanton Road, 724 Kentucky Street, 1479 Navco Road, 1632 Prairie Avenue, and 7320 Fourth Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished and fixing the cost for said structures. 40, 406670, correct resolution 46662016 to correct the spelling of Ice and Clemens Park. 58671, assess cost removal of weeds. Weed lean group 1626, 6672, 73 and 74 are approving award a special bonus to Parks and Recreation Employees of the Month. Parks and Recreation Employee of, Public Works Employee of the Month, Public Services Employee of the Month. 03683, it's reappointing, uh, Sister Lou, Cindy, Lou Cindia Clackhorn and appointing Constance Ray to the advisory commission on the disabled.
Some move.
Second.
Improper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Say I don't pass this.
40660, declare the structure at 753, oh, yeah, Rebecca Drive. A public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move to lay over 60 days.
Second.
Improper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for 60 days.
40661, declare the structure at 962 Government Street. A public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to table.
Second.
Improper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Resolutions being introduced, 08675 through 37682.
My council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Announce. Oh, we need to take up, um, 37682. We need to table that one. That's the, um, medevac.
Uh, we need to waive the rules for immediate consideration of item 37 dash 682.
Second.
Improper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
37682, consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to medevac Alabama to operate an ambulance service.
Move to table.
Second.
Improper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Announcements.
District Six, Councilman Jones. Councilman Two, Councilman Carroll.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to ask, uh, that you all join us, uh, this Sunday, uh, 10:45 for a service on April 14th at Bethel. Bethel AME, it's on Savannah Street at Washington Avenue. That's the Sunday, 10:45. Uh, it is the union of the two churches that you've been hearing about where Sunday is the most segregated, or, or 11 o'clock on Sunday is the most segregated hour in America. Uh, and this is an attempt to, uh, cross communities. So if you would, please come out and join us this Sunday, April, I mean, excuse me, August 14th at 10:45 at Bethel AME on, uh, the corner of Washington Avenue and Savannah Street.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll, District Five, Councilman Day.
We had, uh, scheduled a, uh, one o'clock meeting of the Nance Committee to talk about the rolling stock. It's now 12:45. What is the desire of the council with respect to that meeting? Do you think we could?
1:15.
1:15? No, I don't want to cancel. I'm just trying to figure out when we're gonna have it. Do we have?
1, 1:15 works for me. Your 1:30 is fine, too.
1:30. Nance Committee will meet at 1:30 in the ninth floor conference room in order to hear some information from the administration with respect to replacement of the rolling stock. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, I'd like to say, um, it's the first time I put myself in the midst of it, uh, in the middle of it. But, um, just thank the administration, Baptiste. Um, it was a great day on DIP. Uh, we got us a police precinct in the heart of District Three. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Um, thank you. I know you all have heard plenty from me so far, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank the administration, in particular Jimmy Barber, who has left, for all of his work dealing with all seven of us and many, many other people when it came to these redistricting maps. I know, um, he was about to pull out all of whatever hair he has left. So he certainly deserves a big thank you from all of us for doing what he did for the administration and for the council to, uh, work with us all to get these maps drawn up and to, um, do what's best for the city of Mobile, because that's always what the administration and this council, uh, want to do, what is best for the entire city. So just, y'all, we'll send him my thanks.
All right. Thank you. District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On tonight, we will have our community meeting in the Trenton Garden community at the Joseph Dodge Community Center. Um, will start at 6:00 PM. And then we also will have Ivana co-hosted by the Mobile Area Black Chamber. Um, they will be hosting a career fair with a reception. It will be August the 11th, Thursday at 6:00 PM, again in the Trenton Garden community at the Joseph Dodge Center at 6:00 PM. Who will be there? If you would like to attend, you can call 251-208-7411 to RSVP. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. And Councilman Reynolds, the District Four.
No, I don't.
All right. Do I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Improper move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All of?